All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome to the Palmdale City Council Meeting. Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Bishop?
Here.
Mayor Protemloa?
Here.
Councilmembers Olson?
Here.
Battencourt?
Here.
And Alakon?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Mayor Protemloa, can you lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Followed by a brief moment of silence.
Yes. Your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. A moment of silence, please. Thank you, Mayor. And that's in respect to first responders and our military around the world. Thank you.
All right, and tonight, the meeting will be adjourned in memory of Lieutenant Commander Lindsey P. Evans. All right, Madam Clerk, can you please cue up the cute critter video from our Palmdale Animal Shelter? I think the first one wasn't a hamster. It looked like, that was, yeah, that was quite cute, all right. Okay. Madam Clerk, can we please acknowledge the observances for the month of November, please?
The city would like to acknowledge the following observances for the month of November: National Veterans and Military Families Month, Veterans Day on the 11th, Small Business Saturday on the 30th.
Thank you very much. All right, that takes us to item number four on the agenda, presentations. We have a presentation from the Antelope Valley Union High School District, STEM Expo.
Good evening, I'm Erica Rowe. I'm from Smalford, and we're here on behalf of the Antelope Valley Union High School District to talk about the STEM Expo. And we'd like to begin with a quick video. Thank you for your time. For the past eight years, the Antelope Valley Union High School... Oh, sorry! Thank you. The Antelope Valley Union High School District has hosted an annual STEM Expo event for the high school students in our valley. This event is dedicated to building interest in science, technology, engineering, and mathematics amongst our students. Scheduled for April 26, 2025, this event aims to engage and inspire the next generation of innovators and problem solvers. The Antelope Valley is a fixture for aerospace, agriculture, and other science fields. Building interest in STEM fields is crucial for our community's future. The AVUHSD STEM Expo provides students with hands-on experiences, mentorship opportunities, and exposure to various career paths within STEM. By nurturing their curiosity, we empower them to pursue pathways that can lead to meaningful careers and contributions to society. To make this event a success, we are seeking monetary, physical, and time donations. Your contributions will directly impact the quality of the experience we can offer to our students, helping them spark their interest in STEM. We believe that investing in our youth for today will yield significant benefits for our community tomorrow. So we're reaching out to the council members and our community for the investment of time, monetary donations, and of course, if small businesses would like to contribute prizes for our students. So, thank you so much for your time. And we have some of our Palmdale STEM Expo winners here in-house with us today. Thank you guys so much for coming.
Yeah, would any of the students like to say anything? Yeah, public speaking is scary. All right, I got that. Oh, she does?
Oh, come on up.
Hi, Board. So, kind of like what I would like to talk about is, I come from Sore Palmdale, which is a fairly new school. And kind of what a lot of us that are here from our school is like, wanted to put off something to like be proud of and to kind of show like, even though we're small, we're mighty as well. And I think that was kind of like what I would like say, like that we show off, kind of, yeah? But, yeah, thank you, guys.
Thank you. First off, great video. I feel amped, I feel ready for the rest of the meeting now. I'm gonna, I'm gonna take charge. As a former student that was very interested in science and math and computers and radio-controlled stuff, and those of you who know me, I'm a huge geek when it comes to that stuff. And anything with gears and motors and all that. So, I firmly believe that this is a great way to get a head start in education, learning how things work, looking at the way the mechanics work, gearing ratios, electronics, batteries, all that, is a great, it's a great start to getting education and getting a job in that industry. And it certainly helped me when I was doing it. And it's great to see such an interest in it, because when I went to school, there wasn't this level of interest when it was. It was, I would say, the assemblies and then the multipurpose rooms were a fraction of that.
We did have almost 300 participants this last year's STEM Expo, so it's growing in number. And we would just like to be able to have some prizes that, you know, as a school entity, we aren't able to gift public funds. And so the prizes at the STEM Expo were a little lackluster, if you will. And so we really are looking to support these kids' interests. And they're really hard work, because it is a lot of time and effort that goes into these projects. And so we would just like to, you know, give them something to look forward to.
Thank you. Do you have a flyer with information?
We do, and I can leave this.
Okay, can you leave it there, and then we can distribute it?
Absolutely.
In the community? Okay. So I have some certificates to present.
Oh, can we sing?
Yeah, absolutely.
I just want to say, I mean, thank you for being here, and congratulations to all the kids. Thank you to all of the teachers and faculty administrators and parents who are involved in supporting and creating this program. Watching the video, I wrote it down, it said the lyrics were, "We bout to change the game." And nothing more could be true, because innovations in science and technology are game changers, and you guys are change makers. So congratulations to you, and do your continued success.
Antonius Sedarios. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. We'll get a picture one by one?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And they pay attention to local politics.
Okay, the future.
Yeah.
Of Palmdale is bright.
It is, it really is. Emmanuel H. Jose. Rasik Dham. Bruce Rodriguez. Ruby Ramirez. Not here? Okay.
Oh, Ruby's here.
She's here, all right. Congratulations. We'll do a big group photo after. Should we say her name anyway?
Oh, sure.
We're gonna recognize Esther Robinson. Michelle McCain. Thank you. Abigail Green. I think she's not able to speak.
Yeah, we're so proud of her.
Alexa Karamore. Let's do a group photo. Who put together the Battle Bot? Or who put together some of the robots?
We have a robotics team at Sore High School Palmdale. And, sorry, oh, we're competing in FTC this year. We went to League Me and Zero, and we had our first experience, and we raised thousands of dollars. And right now, we're working on our second robot, which we're gonna take to our next meet in a week or so. So we have a week to go back, and we hope to compete and place better, and hopefully get to states, so.
Awesome. It's exciting watching the robotics team do the work here. And the builds are really amazing, too. It's something I've watched, once again, I'm into all that stuff. I watch Battle Bots, I built RC cars, and soldered together batteries and motors and all that stuff, and aerotronics receivers and servos. And so it really is a lot of fun. And doing that when I was a kid, I was able to get the foundation of how mechanics work, and it gave me the start to understand all of that stuff. So I commend you for taking the interest. And it's great to see the younger generation really be interested in this, because I truly believe it is the foundation for a great education and a great future. Oh, well, I'll check out the build. Okay, let's get a photo.
We have one more.
Oh, one more.
I Sharpertap Jonda.
I Sharpertap Jonda.
All right, everyone up here for a group photo. Stay up here.
And while they gather, it's just a special shout-out to the women in STEM. It's so good to see so many young women in STEM and participating in this project. Congratulations.
Council want to stand up or get in it?
Stand back here.
Whichever. I think, yeah, you'll find it.
You guys wanna just kind of tuck in? Tuck in? Just tuck in.
One, two. Okay, next, we're gonna move on to our next presentation, item 4.2, Association of Sister Cities Palmdale 50th Year Anniversary Presentation. We got Sylvia in the audience. There she is.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sylvia Magallanes, and I am the president for the Association of the Palmdale Sister Cities, Association of Sister Cities of Palmdale. In September, 24 members represented Palmdale for the 50th anniversary in Poncetlan, Jalisco, Mexico. The celebration was filled with friendship, culture, art, music, and of course, authentic Mexican food. During our visit, our organization handed out sponsorships to four school-aged students, special needs school for children with disabilities, and a senior living facility. Over the years, we fostered friendships, and as we've done so, engaging in alternating visits between our two cities. This year, we had the privilege of spending time with some original founders from the Poncetlan Committee. On behalf of the Palmdale Sister City, we're here tonight to present to you some camaraderie? Camaraderie? I knew I was gonna screw that up. Some pins and coins representing our 50th year. And then also, on behalf of the City of Poncetlan, they sent a plaque to be presented to the council. They, this is a replica of what they put up in their square. So they have a plaza called Palmdale Plaza, like our Poncetlan Square, commemorating the 50th year. So this is presented to you from the Poncetlan Municipality, and this is from us as the Palmdale Sister City. So I don't know if we present this to you, Mayor. Want to come down here? It's our turn to give you something.
I heard the trip was excellent this year.
Oh, it was awesome.
Yeah, it gets better every year.
Yes, it does.
We'll be sure to hang this in our hall offices.
Okay, thank you. And then these are pins for you and council.
Okay.
Thank you so much for your continued support. And we look forward to hosting members of the Poncetlan delegation in 2025.
Can you say something?
Yes.
So, Ms. Magallanes, first of all, thank you so much for your leadership in the Sister Cities program.
Thank you.
The Poncetlan Square has really become a focal point. We see young brides doing their photographing there, conciunetas. It's been a place where the community comes together for many different things. I think it's become very, very special. And we owe so much to the City of Poncetlan. And that exchange over the years has really been a tremendous thing. But thanks for your leadership, thanks for all of you that participate. And Maria and your husband have been there for decades, right?
20-plus years, yes, they've been members. Maria is actually from Poncetlan, she was born and raised... You came here as a little girl, yeah? 14 years old, so.
Wonderful, and you're still young at heart. And she actually, she actually helped us with our kids when our kids were little, so we've known the family for a long time. But it's a special relationship between these two cities and the state of Jalisco and the state of California have a strong bond, because there's so many people that are originating, they originated in Jalisco, who are living now here and several generations. But thank you all very, very much. And continued success.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, we look forward to the return next year. Okay, that takes us to public comments. But first, City Manager, do we have any items to pull from the agenda? All right, thank you. City Clerk, can you please play the public comment code of conduct into the record and read the public participation statement?
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Palmdale City Council is now in order. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's city council meeting, and the council encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the council must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the council's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the council. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with council members or staff. Please remain respectful of the form and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements towards the council, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and council members, and may not excessively clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the council meeting. Finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify city staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Now is the time for public participation on the consent calendar, section six, the entirety, and on closed session, section 11. We have no speaker cards at this time.
Seeing none. Councilmembers, would you like to pull any items from the consent calendar?
6.6 and 6.7, please.
Pulling 6.6 and 6.7?
6.8.
I'll move to approve the balance of the consent calendar if there's nothing else pulled.
I'll say it.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the remaining balance, excluding 6.6, 6.7, and 6.8. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, thank you. Item 6.6, staff report, please.
Before you start, I need to recuse myself from this.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Do we need a staff report? Is it just for recusal?
No.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item 6.6 is to approve agreement with Flock Group for an additional five years, adding an additional 25 cameras to the current 50 we've had for the last 12 months. Any questions?
So, I just pulled the item, because it's on the consent calendar, but I think it's a really, really important matter that I think the public should be aware of, because public safety is number one on everybody's mind. Flock cameras are the cameras that are license plate readers and help us identify perpetrators as they flee scenes and as they enter our jurisdiction. Under what is being presented to us today, we have 50 cameras currently in our city. What we're doing tonight is adding an additional 25. And we're approving a five-year contract to monitor those cameras. So if you want to commit a crime, Palmdale's not the place to do it. But I just want to commend our public safety department for moving forward on this program, expanding it, and just want to grant the public the reassurance to know that even though you don't know exactly where they are and what we're doing, we are doing the best that we can, utilizing technology innovations to help reduce crime and keep our community safe. So thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
But I'd like to see if our captain could come forward and tell us how this has benefited the Sheriff's Department here in our city, and how it's assuring the security of the public. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I could tell you, it's not only used for different types of crimes, such as armed robberies, assaults, and also missing persons, which a lot of people wouldn't think about. But we've had several instances where someone with dementia or some other type of issue like that has gone missing, and we've been able to locate them via the cameras to actually find the vehicle and locate them versus them being lost. So it's not only just a crime-solving thing, it's helping save people from being lost. We've had several instances lately in which we've had robberies, in which we've been able to track suspect vehicles, and able to get their information later on via the vehicle or other types of means that we have to our system. The cameras are throughout the whole city. We feel like these next 25 are gonna add to what we already have, which will kind of fill in some gaps and get that information we need. We're averaging over 3 million reads per month off the system, and it gives us a lot of vital information. We can search based off of what a car looks like, the make, model, whatever it may be. But it also captures people on bicycles sometimes. Like, we've had one instance recently in which an assault happened, and for whatever reason, a car's going by at the same time, and it captures a picture of the guy on the bike that was riding by, too, that was actually the suspect. So the more information, the better for us, because as technology emerges, we're gonna use it to our advantage for calls that are happening at that time, and which we can adapt to it at the time and get that real-time information to our deputies.
Now that, we're gonna get a real district attorney in Los Angeles County. Is this going to help in the prosecution of offenses in terms of gathering any evidence that would be useful in the prosecution of a defendant?
Obviously, evidence like this is always helpful in a prosecution. Prosecution's always left to the DA's office, and it's at their discretion. I guess time will tell what this DA will do, okay? I could tell you with passage of Prop 36 and the hardening of the crimes for like retail theft and prior convictions, I think you'll see a lot more folks, hopefully getting some type of diversion or some other type of accountability that maybe deters them from wanting to be in a life of crime.
No, this is perfect. I've come to understand that it helps solve crimes in a matter of minutes, if not seconds. And the best part about this is, like you said, is if they think they're gonna be smart, and they're gonna take the license plates off their car, nope, it will still read the car, and it will track you where you're going from point A to point B to point C. And putting more of these cameras up will even make it harder to get around, right? So everywhere you're gonna go.
It's basically like having an eyewitness in a bunch of different locations at all times to give us some data.
So it's gonna give us the tools and the evidence to find out the person who's breaking the law. And then to speak to, you know, the DA. Yes, we are getting a new DA. But Palmdale, we're also working on prosecuting local crimes as well with the judge and the courthouse. So one way or the other, public safety is number one, and we're gonna make sure that you guys are getting the tools to solve the crimes, and we need to do what we need to do to make sure those people are being held accountable.
Yes, sir. The addition of this technology just adds to our strategy. We're looking to combat retail theft, stolen vehicles, and crimes against persons, right? So this all goes in tune with that. We have an operation we're coming up the next two months to basically try to rid the city of any type of retail theft during the holiday season. So this is gonna help with that operation.
So if you're gonna break the law, don't do it in Palmdale?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you very much, Captain.
If there aren't any other questions, I'm happy to move the item.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes.
All right.
Ms. Button Court?
Let's pull her out of the silent chamber. Let's pull her out of the silent chambers.
She went this way, right?
Yeah, she went that way. Hey, Ben.
Hey, how's everyone doing today?
I think we're doing pretty good.
That's good.
Are we on, what number are we on now?
Uh, six seven.
Okay.
Charging. Charging.
Okay, oh, good.
So, mayor and members of the city council, this item is to accept a grant from the U.S. Department of Transportation for their charging, I always get it mixed up, their charging infrastructure, sorry, charging and fueling infrastructure program. We are being awarded $14.8 million as a lead agency, where we're working with several other agencies to deploy electric vehicle charging infrastructure. Our share will be about $1.7 million in electric vehicle charging units, along with $150,000 for administration of the grant. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
No questions. I just wanted to, again, commend the team for bringing this money to the city of Palmdale and to talk a little bit about the importance of it. Because for me, on the east side of Palmdale, and I think the other council members who represent the east side of Palmdale, this means a lot. This is incredible progress, 14 million invested in our disadvantaged communities. And so for those who, I've been talking about this since I was elected. We have, I've assessed the, and I have this, and I had it at my town hall, and I know they have it via, via, I don't know if they can put it on the, on the screen for those that are watching online and for the benefit of the public. But this is a map of the city of Palmdale. What's darkened in the, what's yellow is, that's the 14. What's darkened are census tracts. The city of Palmdale has 34 total census tracts. 20 of those, this is coming from our city of Palmdale general plan. At the time that we adopted the plan, the city of Palmdale had 20 disadvantaged areas, census tracts that were identified as disadvantaged communities. All of those are on the east side of Palmdale. Nine of those, there are 10 census tracts in my council district. Nine of them are identified as disadvantaged communities. I have the highest concentration of disadvantaged communities in the city. Councilmember Olson, councilmember Bettencourt also share some. I think councilmember Austin Bishop has portions of some as well. But this grant is specifically intended to offset the social inequities that exist in these communities, particularly, I mean, Calen-Biro screen, the way that you become identified as a disadvantaged community is low income, but also environmental pollutants, air contaminants, water contaminants. They take a lot of, there are 21 indicators that they take into consideration, asthma, various other health indicators, and they identify these census tracts. So $14 million investing in the east side of Palmdale is remarkable. I want to reassure, there are three locations under this grant that are going to be identified, Dominic Massari, the library, and right here at Poncy Land. Council District 5 is not identified as one of the recipients of, of some of these EV chargers. But I want, I raise that because I want to grant reassurance to the people in Council District 5 that we are going to get our chargers to, we're getting them through a different source. We're getting 12 at McAdams Park, and those are slotted to be delivered to Council District 5, ideally next fall, latest, the, the following spring. So I just want to say thank you to you and your team. I think this is going to make the world of difference in terms of access and equity on the east side and in the community that I represent. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Sure.
Can some of this money be allocated to apartment complexes? Because I've been getting calls from people that they're having, their apartment complex has no charging stations. So they are going to the parks and the public places, and they have to stay there, you know, because they have no car while it's charging. So if, if we can assist some of these apartment complexes with getting a couple of charging stations so they don't have to use the parks?
Unfortunately, I can't use this grant for that. But it is a discussion that we're having. We're working with a group that has found a way to provide this service to apartment complexes.
Okay.
And we're also looking at how we can reallocate some grant funds we already have to apartment complexes to provide that service because it's kind of, I always say it's a chicken or the egg type of thing where some people want to have electric vehicles, but they can't because they live at a complex. And so we're realizing that, we're trying to see how we can work.
Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem.
As a driver of a plug-in hybrid electric vehicle of 15 years, since before it was popular, and people used to kind of give me that funny look when you're like, oh, you drive an electric car? George is naughty. It's, it's a very complex situation. Yes, this, this grant's going to help. Do we get the 14 eight, or do we get a piece of it? Because when we had our briefing, you said we get a piece of.
We get a piece of it, not the full amount.
Okay, so we're getting a piece of it, which is good, which is good. There's, which is, I, I'm always advocating for plug-in cars, and through my journey of having an electric vehicle, I've learned it's all about the logistics, too. Because the Teslas are able to make it work because they can go the distance. But a lot of the other manufacturers, not until recently, are they able to offer the distance? Like, a lot of them, you'd get 50 to maybe 100 miles, and that'd be like a two or three-hour charge if it's like a Level 2. Or a Level 1, most people can, can plug in a Level 1 at their house or something like that. This is going to help at least because some of the new manufacturers are making some models that actually go the distance. You can actually get from Palmdale to, to, let's say Burbank or somewhere on LA, if you charge, you can get back up. So we're finally getting there, and luckily, we're getting the grants to help bridge that gap. But Tesla's had tremendous success in this because they've had the cars that have gone the distance. That's why we see so many people driving Teslas in our valley because you can actually do a full charge on a Tesla, drive it all the way down to LA, and then drive it all the way back up. So it's nice to see that, that there's going to be some chargers for the people that, that are, it's kind of, it's, the technology's catching up, but it's still, it's, it's logistics. Laura made a great point, too, because that's, that's, I've gotten a lot of inquiries about that because people need to charge their car. And if you do charge your car, like, like the, the new Hondas and Toyotas, that's a six to eight-hour charge on a Level 2. So it'd be hard to park it there and leave. It's logistics. It's, a lot of it's logistics.
And if you do live in a single-family home and you can accommodate it, we actually do have a rebate program through Epic, our energy program, where we're giving $250 or $550, up to $550 to electric vehicle and plug-in hybrid electric vehicle owners so that they can get the chargers they need so they can charge at home.
So it's good. It takes, like, I've come to realize over the years, it's going to take a variety of charging solutions to accommodate everybody's need. And, and also, the good news is, too, Tesla is now making an adapter. So if you don't have a Tesla, you can still use their charging stations, which is a huge, huge plus because they're the ones, they have the faster chargers. That they have the, I guess, the 440s, you'd call it, like, you know, the Level 4s or 3s. They're the ones that can charge really fast. So this is exciting. It's good stuff. I'm, I'm, as a driver of an electric car, I'm happy to see it.
All right, thank you.
So just, I just, for the listening public, the library, for those of you who are interested, the library is going to be getting six. Two of them are, are going to be the fast chargers. Dominic Massari is going to get 14, and two of those are fast chargers. And to councilmember Bettencourt's point, we're going to get 12 in Poncy Lot Square. And the reason why that was selected specifically to address the need in the, the adjacent multifamily developments right here. So it's a remarkable accomplishment. Again, thank you. If there aren't any additional questions, I'd be happy to move this item.
I'll move to adopt the item.
Anyway, I need, I moved. We need a second.
You want a second?
Who moved it?
She moved it first.
I'll second it.
All right, no, motion, second. Here we go. Yeah, it's taken years for this plug-in electric vehicle technology to.
Yeah, I know.
I know you've been following this for years.
Yeah, I have. And I'm a proud owner of one, too, so I love it, so.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Hopefully soon, we'll see the solid-state batteries come out.
Right, and, yeah, that'll be a game changer.
That'll be a game changer. Then, then we won't even be talking charging stations.
Right.
All right.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Attorney, I pulled this item because I live so very close to that location. I don't know if I'm able to vote on it.
Are you?
500 or 1,000 feet?
Are you at 500, do you think?
I, I don't know. I, I, I'm at 36th Street, and that's 40th. I, I think at, at an abundance of caution. Okay.
Since we're not precise, we'll take the chair.
Now, this, this, do we need a report on this? I don't think so. It's just recusal. I'll move to approve the item.
Okay, motion, second. Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting.
Motion passes.
All right, moving on. And she's back. I know, right. All right, item seven, public hearing. City clerk, please read the title of resolution number CC 2024-08080.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale declaring results of majority protest proceedings and renewing the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District.
All right, staff report.
Good evening, council members. Megan Taggart, I am the acting director of Economic and Community Development, but I'm here in my capacity as the executive director for Visit Palmdale. So the item before you tonight is the final action on the renewal of the Palmdale Tourism Improvement District, also known as the PTID. State law requires that this renewal comes before you three times. It came before you on August 21st, where you adopted a resolution of intention to renew the PTID. It came back before you on September 18th, in which we received some public comments, both written and verbal, in favor of renewal of the PTID. And then we were back before you this evening for final action on the item. So just as a brief reminder, the program is currently funded through a 2% assessment of all of our lodging businesses within the city. And those funds, excuse me, are utilized to provide services and destination marketing and tourism promotion. And all of these services within, provided by the PTID are intended to attract visitors and boost overnight stays in our hotels during the weekends on, during times when they're not usually very busy. And so that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Seeing none? All right. I think we've had great success with this so far. It's in its second year, third year?
Third.
Third year. It's in its third year. And I can say that a lot of, all of the hotel managers and partners we have are happy. And they enjoy, they enjoy what we're doing, and they enjoy being a part of it.
Agreed.
Yeah. Okay. So we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing, receive any testimony?
There are no speaker cards on this item.
Seeing none, we're going to close the public hearing. Do we need to vote to close the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay, let's, let's vote.
No, no vote.
No vote? Okay, all right. Counsel, do we have any discussion?
I think we ought to do it.
All right.
I'll move to approve the item.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
Awesome. All right, 7-2, city clerk, please read the title of resolution CC 24, 2024-085 into the record, please.
A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving major modification 24-0023 and finding that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review.
Before we get started, I have to recuse myself from this one also. So I'll be stepping in the back.
All right. Off she, off she goes. All right, Brenda, staff report.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. The item before you tonight is major modification 24-0023 for what is commonly known as the Together California Project located north of Avenue R, west of 30th Street East, near McAdam Park. On November 15th, 2023, the city council approved the comprehensive development for Together California. Since then, city staff has been actively working with the applicant through the plan check process. The project includes seven residential buildings, one mixed-use building, and outdoor amenities in two phases. The seven residential buildings will each provide two four-bedroom units with a connected studio unit. The residential portion of the site also includes outdoor play areas for all ages, picnic gathering areas, and a garden. The mixed-use area will be located along 30th Street East and will include six affordable studio units, office space, and community space, along with some outdoor picnic areas. The project is intended to provide housing for foster care youth, onsite caregivers, and family members. At this time, the applicant is requesting modifications to the architectural design and site layout necessary to meet the project objectives and some of, and make it economically feasible. In your packet, you received an itemized list and a side-by-side rendering of the changes requested by the applicant. The project was reviewed by the planning commission on October 10th, where the commission recommended that mature trees be planted and the removal of some of the shade structures. And I am here to answer any questions, and also, we have our applicant here.
Mr. Mayor, if, could we, we've got the Together California folks here. Would you mind just coming up and sharing? This is such a wonderful, innovative project. And you, when you tell the story, it's got so much heart and passion behind it. It would be wonderful if the public could hear it as well.
Tim, you knew we were going to make you speak.
Yeah, I know. Well, you know, thank you, councilmen and women, and, and thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's, I'll get into my project in a second, but it's also not lost on me to how today's meeting began. You gave respect and dignity to young people, and you're doing that with this project, too. So I applaud you for that. So what we are doing is, there will be 12 homes in our first phase of that, that will be licensed to care for six children in foster care. 75% of children who go into foster care get separated from their own siblings, which is also many times their source of strength. You are helping us create an alternative model in the state of California to value and provide the dignity and respect of children when they're traumatized by going into foster care by remaining together. And from day one, the political will to get this done has been remarkable. And we are now at a point where we did make some of the modifications. I do want to address, I know there were questions about, you know, lighting and, and safety, which is, you know, again, I think speaks to your, your interest in our, our project. So it, it's undeveloped land. It's kind of urgent land that we're investing in the infrastructure and then to, to get going vertical relatively soon, and I'll talk about the timeline. But what this site will be, it will be really three things. It will be a site where local families who are going through foster care system can remain close. And for the birth parents not go to three or four different agencies because their kids are separated all over, you're making that choice and that principle, that moral value of the priority of family bonds. It will be that place for that to happen. It will also be a place where we focus a lot on education and good outcomes. In Illinois, where I developed these sites initially, you know, we went through 100% high school graduation rate. Only 48% of children who go into foster care ever graduate high school. Only 3% ever get to college. And you're going to change that story here for the children and families in Palmdale. But the third thing it does, I think, which is really important, is it creates a place for people to experience foster care. Local people, as well as other people from outside, can see and support the strengthening of family bonds. And it's because you're willing to take that step together with us that we're making that different story. I've been fortunate enough, over 20 years of doing this, of seeing children and benefit, and families benefit, becoming stronger. And it all starts with good political leadership to, to make that happen. So we did make some modifications to what we wanted to. Some of this was based on economics. A lot of it was based on other issues of safety to make sure that there's enough transparencies in the house. We didn't shrink the, we didn't shrink our capacity. So we'll still be providing the home, the home for six children in each one of these 12 homes in the studio apartments. We kept the community center at its site. So this is a center that we're billing for the whole community. Where if it was just being built for us, it'd be a lot smaller. Where, if it was just being built for us, it'd be a lot smaller. Uh, but this is gonna be something where the community can come together, children don't feel isolated, and we can all learn and grow and create the next leaders of the community by, by taking this step forward. Let me stop there and ask for any questions or comments?
Well, first of all, thank you, um, for, one, your commitment, your lifelong commitment to children. What you've done, uh, in Chicago and elsewhere, and what you are now bringing to Palmdale, uh, is really remarkable. So thank you for your, your life of service and your commitment to kids, and for bringing it to the city of Palmdale. We've got, um, astronomical numbers of, of kids that are, um, in the system, uh, currently, and this is gonna go a long way in terms of, of keeping siblings together, but also setting forth a model for the state of California and nationally. Um, one thing that you did, well, a couple, so some of the target populations that will be, um, housed at this facility, so it's one to keep the kids together, siblings together, but there's also gonna be space for, um, parents who are working towards reunification. I think that's an important piece, but there's also going to be space for kids who are aging out of the system. Foster care, when you turn 18, um, you're kinda, they give you a goodbye, you know, wave, and, and then you're, you're off on your own. And oftentimes, uh, those kids, uh, become homeless. Uh, and this is going to help prevent that and provide a transition, uh, for those, uh, kids that are transit, that are aging out of the system. So it's, uh, it's a multifaceted, um, model, and I think it's, it's really, really going to, um, change the face of service provision, uh, in, in the foster system. So thank you. It's, it's a delight to have it in, in the heart of my district. I've gotta say it every time, because it really is going to transform that corridor of the city. It's adjacent to McAdam Park, uh, in between the bowling alley and McAdam Park. It's that big, uh, vacant lot. Uh, we're investing millions, I think, upwards of $6 million in, uh, McAdam Park, uh, to complement, uh, the development of Together California. Again, it's transformative, uh, for the east side of Palmdale. Uh, so I just, on all fronts, thank you, uh, for what you do and what you're bringing to our city.
I very much appreciate that and, and the work of the leadership of the council. But what this model does, and I think you, you spoke very well, it, it looks at all aspects of, of a young person's life. And what we do in this model is we place the child at the center of our social narrative, and we keep an eye on those children and those families, and we see, it's like a garden, we see the beauty that can come about when we care in that way. And, you know, I applaud, uh, both your support, uh, you know, people still take my calls when I call, and getting through permanent, but the city has been wonderful in that. And, um, you know, we started the, the, the grading and utilities, uh, we've gotten approval on the, um, early foundations, and so we will be, you know, expediting this as, as we can, so thank you to everyone.
So one last thing, I just was reminded, uh, during our, our conversation at the mayor's, um, uh, home at, at the event last week, you mentioned something to me, um, that I think is worth noting tonight, because there are a lot of people who watch these meetings, and there are people, uh, in here who are also changemakers, who have word-of-mouth power. Um, you mentioned, maybe you could just share about, um, the, the disparity in foster parents, parent, parenting parents, uh, bilingual foster parents?
Yeah, it, it's a very good point. Um, and I shared, um, a, a very good piece of legislation, uh, federal legislation called the Burgos Law, has been in place for a number of years in the United States. And what it does is that it's, it says states that if a child or either one or both parents are Spanish-speaking, then there must be a Spanish-speaking resource parent, a foster parent, and caseworker. And, um, it is true that disproportionately, uh, Spanish-speaking children, um, come into the system and linger more, um, for all sorts of different reasons. And to make sure you preserve culture and, and language identity, um, we've done a very good job in, in Chicago and, and Illinois, we, you know, I was talking to the, the councilwoman too about this, about outreach into that, the community, um, to find that types of needed support to make that happen, uh, as an anchor to what we do. Um, and I think for many people, this communitarian model, what we call Together California, Village for Brothers and Sisters, it really resonates of, this is a neighborhood in what I think is a very beautiful community that I even saw tonight, of where we really do authentically care for children, and especially vulnerable children, to make that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, don't go away yet.
Oh, yeah. We have other, we have other comments.
Sure. I, I wanna start by thanking supervisor Catherine Barker, because as I understand it, you guys went to her first. She said, "I'm in, and I know the perfect place for you," and she brought you to Palmdale. So we thank her for her leadership and her support of this project. If you see us posting pictures online with Christian Bale, it's because of this project. He's associated with that. And I wanted to mention this to you. It, it's kinda corny, but not, stay with me here. Seventy-two children will live at this village at any given time. So, and something you said to me last week, too, uh, I wanna stop referring to them as foster children, because they're just children. But 72 at a time, in the history, in the life of this project, that'll be thousands of kids whose lives you change. So it's cool for us to get to meet Batman. But Tim, you are a real-life superhero.
Oh, that's very kind, Eric.
Thank you for everything you're doing for the kids of Palmdale, the kids of Chicago, and the kids of this country. Thank you.
That's very, very, very kind. That means a lot to me. Thank you. But it's, it's my staff, it's the team, the board, it is Christian Bale. But it's also, you know, we came here, and other communities said no, or they couldn't make it happen. And through the supervisor, but then through the leadership of this council, it didn't, it wasn't like, "How will we do it?" It's, we're gonna do it. And it's that determination, I think, that has been part of my experience here in this community, of we are gonna find a way, and especially find a way when children are involved. And, and, uh, that's a moral principle of this community.
It is. All right.
So again, uh, and, you know, going on, uh, what Mr. Olson said, uh, it was great meeting you. So we'd seen you before, but we never really got a chance to interact with you, and, and it was wonderful to, uh, meet with you down at Mayor Bass's, uh, home. That was a fabulous reception. And it also shows, more importantly, it shows what can be done when we collaborate, uh, with other, with other entities, other governmental entities, such as, uh, City of Los Angeles, County of Los Angeles, City of Palmdale, and, and others that are involved, uh, not least of which is your organization. And, uh, as, uh, Mr. Olson said, it's going to be a generational thing, because we start with 72, and then those 72 will eventually, uh, move along. Hopefully, they'll all go into productive lives and not end up in homelessness. But I believe the program that you have, encouraging these children to graduate from high school, and go on with their careers, whether it be in higher learning, or whether it is in the, uh, trades through, uh, developmental skills that we, uh, foster here as well in the city of Palmdale. It's going to affect, as, uh, Councilman Olson said, hundreds and then thousands over the generations. And, uh, it's going to be a very positive thing. And, um, I went by there today just to see how things were going, and, uh, well, the ground has been scraped, and, uh...
Yeah, they're starting.
And it, I guess it's just waiting for our action to, to move along further.
Yeah, I, I, they're, they're massing, uh, the kind of, uh, I think, at the, uh, next week, they'll begin in earnest, uh, some of the grading.
There've been some, some kind of activity already.
Yeah, they're doing some initially, how they had, uh, site planners and all that up there.
So when do you think that, uh, this project will be terminated and fully built and, and opened up?
Um, it is, uh, you know, how it is with construction. I, I think initially we thought the end of next year, uh, but I think it's gonna be by the mid of, what would be 26, we get 18 months of construction.
Very good.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I think it, there's, you know, there's always things you don't know, uh, but, you know, I think the weather cooperates and everything else. Like you said, the city and the permitting process has been very, very efficient.
We look forward to it, and I think our entire community should, uh, show your, our appreciation for you, so if we could all applaud you.
All right. I'll be quick.
Oh, there's, it's okay. I, I, I'm humbled by this.
Good. You deserve it. Well, we, we started this, I think you, you came here three, four years ago. We started working this three, four years ago, and that's sometimes how long these projects take. And, and I, I remember when you came, 'cause it was, it was like during or right after the pandemic, and...
Yeah.
But I just thought, I said, you know, "They're coming, they wanna help kids in need, and they have Christian Bale, they have Batman attached to this project." Who, who wouldn't, who wouldn't take this opportunity? So it kinda, it blew my mind a little bit when you said you got, you got friction from other cities. Uh, so when you came here, it was a no-brainer. Of course, we're gonna partner with you, and we're gonna help you out. And I'm glad to see this project, after the, the years of, of working on it, it's finally starting to, to get some traction, and it's finally getting s- some progress, and, and we're here, we're with you, and, uh, we're gonna be a good partner and also help with the other agencies as well, that give you some friction. But, um, thank you for being here, and thank you for continuing to push this project forward, even though it's been a few, three, four years to get it going.
I, I, I am very humbled by that. I, I think one of the things I've learned, uh, for seeing in children in foster care is they're waiting for adults to give up on them. And you people have not done that, and the adults in this community have not done that. And I think that, you know, I can do what I can do because of what you're doing. And, um, I, I really, um, feel, you know, very much empowered, uh, because what this project does, it doesn't create something new. It creates shelter, you know, the homes to bring out the beauty that's already been here. And I think the, this community has responded with that each time we've turned to them. So it's an honor. There are other mayors, I won't mention names, who are jealous that it's happening here. But you folks began this, so thank you.
This is the good stuff. This is why we do, I can speak for myself, I don't know about my colleagues, this is why I do this, to deliver projects like this and to change lives. So if there are no other questions or comments, I proudly would move this item.
Let's do a public hearing. Let's, well, we have open, let's open the public hearing.
There are no speaker cards on this item, mayor.
All right. Let's close the public hearing.
There's somebody, Mr. Murphy.
Oh, Murph.
I don't even have to move from where I'm at. I'm sure everybody here can hear me.
Thank you.
I want you to know that I've met Tim the first time he came here, and we had a very wonderful conversation, and I met him this second time. It's a wonderful project, it's a wonderful group, and I think it's wonderful that everybody's behind you.
That's very kind. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Oh, yes, yes.
It takes a village, so let's build a village.
Yeah, really go.
All right. Let's vote on this thing, so they can start pouring the concrete.
I'll reaffirm my motion. I think we need a second, though.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote. All right. Well, she's loading. So we had a motion and second to adopt resolution CC 2024 dash oh eighty-five.
Start voting. Motion passes.
And that passes.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you so much for the kindness.
Did you get the four? It said three.
It said it was only voted on by three.
Just, it might have been a... Okay. It did pass with four votes, with Laura Bettencourt recusing herself. Okay. Are you making us vote again? Okay. You gotta go back out.
Oh, oh.
There was a error in the voting system. Better safe than sorry. I was worried, I, I saw that, and I'm like, something's off.
What happened? We, didn't count first time, or what?
Yeah, I think one of them didn't count. There we go. Passes, four yes votes, with councilmember Laura Bettencourt recusing herself. Congratulations. All right. That takes us to item 7.3. City clerk, can you please read the title of resolution CC 2024 dash eighty-two into the record?
A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an aggregate outstanding principal amount not to exceed 15 million to finance and refinance a 48-unit qualified residential rental project for the benefit of Ninth Street East Housing LP, a California Limited Partnership, or another entity to be created by Malarie Housing Investment, Inc., or an affiliate, and certain other matters relating thereto.
All right. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, mayor and council. Janelle Sampson, Director of Operations. Uh, this item before you, we are here to conduct the public hearing pursuant to the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or TFR, regarding the issuance of revenue bonds by the CMFA, California Municipal Finance Authority, and to adopt the resolution, which was just read into the record. Um, I do want to point out, this is not an obligation of the city, this is an obligation of the borrower, um, so there's no financial obligation here for the city. We are just required to adopt it, since the project is located in our jurisdiction.
Understood. So at this time, we're gonna open the public hearing and receive any testimony? You have any comments?
There are no, um, speaker cards on this item.
Seeing none, so we'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do we have a discussion on this item?
Move to approve it.
We have a motion? We have a second? Let's go ahead and vote.
Start voting. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number eight, city managers' report.
Good evening, mayor and council. It continues to be a busy fall season, riding right into the holidays. Uh, we just celebrated a very successful Palmdale in many different ways in October. Uh, we had the Palmdale Sheriff's Station Halloween-themed open house that had hundreds and hundreds pass through. Uh, we also had the Save Spooktacular Trick-or-Treat Drive-Thru, where we served 235 families and 870 children. Uh, we had, we're blessed to have many partners in that program with us. We also had, uh, the Palmdale Sheriff Booster Trunk or Treat, which is always a crowd favorite, and the AV Alta Academy Ribbon Cutting, um, at Sam Yellen Park. Upcoming, we continue to have, uh, the Ninth Street Eats Food Trucks every Friday. The ILEAD Youth Conference will be Friday, November 8th. We've got, uh, a lot of kids signed up for that already, uh, which leads right into our I Serve program, which I was told today we have over 30 applications for already. We've got the Heart and Stroke Walk with Palmdale Regional Medical Center this Saturday as well, and Veterans Day Ceremony on November 11th at 11:00 AM. Uh, Ju- Youth for Justice Intro to the Justice System, and a Holiday Craft Boutique as well. You can find all of this information on our community page. Uh, one thing we'd like to draw everyone's attention to is, the county is accepting comments on State Route 14, LA County Safety and Mobility Improvement Project scoping. Uh, this is very important for our community. It's very important for you to be engaged and take a stand and give your comments back, uh, to Metro, Caltrans, and the NCTC. There's a public scoping meeting on Tuesday, November 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Palmdale Oasis Park Recreational Center. It is, uh, critical to provide feedback on the South, uh, State Route 14 and future improvements, uh, related to it. That being said, I'd also like to introduce our two newest, uh, staff members and team members. We've got Jarrett Palmieri here, who is our new Director of Public Safety. Stand up. He's been here a whopping three weeks, and, uh, we're seeing some great stuff already. So we've been looking forward to this position for quite some time, and he comes to us with a lot of experience, so we're very excited to have him join our team. And then, uh, last but not least, and number two, is Lee Torres, our new Public Works Director. Uh, I am, um, blown away by his calm nature and his ability to just get things done. So we're very excited. You have a very strong, uh, leadership team here at the city of Palmdale. There's a couple more key positions that we are filling in the next couple of weeks, uh, but we will be full strength by the beginning of the year, and, um, if you think we're busy now, watch out, because here it comes. So thank you all for your patience while we have filled some very strategic positions. I'm very blessed to welcome Lee and Jarrett to the team, and, um, grateful for everybody who kept us up and kept us afloat while we were filling those positions. That's the end of my report.
All right.
Good.
Okay. So council reports, announcements, requests for future agenda items. Let's start with Laura.
Okay. I'll start with my report. Um, we had the audit committee, so we, we had our first of, uh, a series of audit committee meetings, and we have a new audit, audit committee member that we, uh, have on that now. Uh, on October 5th, I did the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer Walk, and I want to thank Marcia Furman for the use of her scooter. Marcia and I had scooter races at the event. That was a lot of fun, and I still have your scooter, by the way. We did the AV Chambers State of the County with Catherine Barker, the Sanitation District's District's Kaleidoscope Fall Festival, the Trick-or-Treat Pumpkin Walk at Dominant Musoree Park. Me and my grandson went to that. He had a really good time. Did the Palmdale Recycled Water Authority Board Meeting. Went to the AV Hispanic Chamber Commerce, Chamber of Commerce State of the State Luncheon with Tom Latkey and Wilk and Juan Correo. So that was a lot of fun. Mayor, I filled in for you at the annual Chili Cook Off at Antelope Valley Church with Dave Owens. So.
Was it yummy?
It was delicious. It was wonderful. I told them not to invite you next year that I would go again. I had my Neighborhood Watch District 3 meeting at Oasis Park. Had pretty good turnout there. It was fun. Attended the AV Edge Fall Forum Luncheon and learned a lot about what's going on with AV Edge. I think, Mayor, you and I went to the Vet the Park. That was a really good event. And they said they're having another one coming up soon. I did, I attended the Sheriff's Department's Trunk-or-Treat Event at Potsdam Lane Square. I also attended the Pasadena Pet Event where LA County Animal Control, Riverside Animal Control, San Bernardino Animal Control, and a bunch of rescues all took their animals to the Pasadena Rose Bowl and let all of us look at their pets. So I attended that. And my new pet is called Pearl. And my daughter's new pet is called Marvel. And we actually got this from a rescue called Sunny Days Acre, which is actually based out of Agua Dulce. So when I feel like she's ready, I'll actually bring her in for you guys to see. And probably one of the most important things I did, although it wasn't in October, was to vote. And we have a new president and a whole new batch of people coming in for different positions. And that concludes my events for the month.
Thank you, Councilmember Bettencourt. Mayor Protemola, what do you have for us?
Well, there was a lot of activity in October, really quite a bit. So the Spanish Talk Radio, which we did together, and we certainly reach out to the Spanish-speaking community to let the, that community know what's happening here in the city. And we try to promote some of the events that are, that are coming up. I had a meeting at the VA in Sepulveda with officials from Veterans Administration in Housing and how we can possibly work together to bring workforce housing here to Palmdale. I think that was a very positive meeting. We included in that meeting was Palmdale Regional Hospital, who is also interested in bringing housing here to address the issue of their residents because they have residents that have graduated from medical school, but they're doing the residency here in Palmdale. But because of the lack of housing, they can't find a place to stay. And oftentimes, they're either staying in hotels or traveling down to Valencia or the San Fernando Valley. So we're trying to address that. The AV Chamber State of the County with Catherine Berger. It's always great to have her here. She's a great champion for Antelope Valley. And we'll see, I believe, Measure G passed, if I understand it. Am I wrong about that? I don't know what the latest is. It's close.
They're not finished counting all the ballots, so.
Yeah, it's still going. I'm not sure. Measure G would expand the Board of Supervisors from five to nine. I think that Catherine Berger and before her, Michael Antonovich were great advocates for our area, our region. I'm not sure. Oftentimes, when there's something controversial, most of the time, she collaborates with the rest of the Board of Supervisors, and they have consensus. But once in a while, she's on the wrong end of a four-to-one vote or a four-to-two vote. I mean, either four-to-one or a three-to-two. And on occasions, it's been because she's been championing issues that, that are important to us up here and perhaps the supervisors down below don't particularly agree. But she's been great. If we go to nine, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of opportunities for people with political ambition. And, but I'm not sure that that is going to really help us up here in AV because then, instead of being on the wrong end of a four-to-one vote, our representative would be on the wrong end of an eight-to-one vote. So we'll see. I hope that, that works out. We did host the Executive Committee for the North County Regional Roundtable on Homelessness. I do sit on the Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment downtown Los Angeles. And we did have Mayor Bass come up here, Supervisor Berger. We had representatives from the City of Lancaster, from Santa Clarita. Of course, Palmdale was there. I think the three of us were there. And the City of San Fernando, the Mayor of San Fernando came up. So that was good participation. These meetings are going to be held across the region in different cities as we move forward, trying to address this, this real problem of homelessness. It's such a painful thing to really deal with that. But we're doing everything we can. Apparently, Measure A has passed, and that's going to, to bring in additional money. My job there is to make sure that Antelope Valley gets its fair share from the money that is raised from sales tax. Under Measure H, we have been on the wrong end. Measure H was passed in 2017. The homeless population in LA County was 26,000. After raising billions of dollars and spending enormous amounts of money, creating a huge bureaucracy to address that issue, the homeless population has increased to 70,000. And so we just want to make sure that whatever's generated here in the Antelope Valley, that we get our fair share. That's my job there. And I hope to pursue that with all the vigor that I can. We had the High Desert Corridor JPA Board of Directors Meeting, the Kaleidoscope Fall Festival, which was fantastic. I think that's one of the things that we do for the city is to provide events like that, that everybody can come out and enjoy whatever the venue is. We met with Dr. Smith, the CEO of Mojave Airport, about possible issues involving bringing an airport here. I went to the AV QMD Board Meeting. We received an award at the 10th anniversary of operating the electric fleet at AVTA. It's the first fully electrified bus transportation system in the United States. And that's right here in our Antelope Valley. I attended also the Third Annual AV Mental Health Awareness Day. Mental health is an enormous problem, directly increasing the issue of the unhoused. It's something that I believe that this council is addressing with providing money here locally to address that. And we can't do enough on that issue. I did go to the AVTA Board Meeting, the AV Hispanic Chamber Commerce that you indicated with our legislators there. Then again, the Executive Committee for Regional Homeless Alignment Meeting in downtown LA, which I spoke about. There was a Three Heart Connection Thrivers Gala. That was really nice. And it was, it was a very, very nice event that night. Again, another mental health was the, well, we're evaluating some applications that have been made for a fund that we actually voted on almost three years ago, for trying to reach and provide some kind of service or at least education to individuals that have someone that is suffering from a mental disorder or illness, and somehow do not meet the criteria for either the deputy sheriff to declare them 51-50 and put some kind of a hold on them, or have some kind of an issue. And therefore, the families end up having these individuals in their home, and there's nothing that they can do about it because there's just no services being provided. We're addressing that here in the City of Palmdale. And that is something that we're going to address in our way here. The reception for Together California that we saw Tim talk about here, he came up here for the development over on 30th East for the children that are in the foster program. It's wonderful. We were hosted by the city, the mayor of the City of LA, Karen Bass. Supervisor Berger was there. Christian Bell was there. I wasn't real sure who that was, but now I know. So I went home and I watched American Psycho.
Was it the English accent?
What's that?
Was it the English accent that kind of threw you off?
No, you know, yeah, the English accent, because in the movie, he doesn't have the accent at all. I mean, that's just sort of amazing.
Yeah, he does great with his voice.
But it's wonderful that, that somebody on that level is, cares about this issue, about these children that are in these foster homes. And he, well, one of his business partners announced that they're going to make a movie that is going to focus on a foster child that's growing up in that system. And whatever profits of that movie, 10% of which are going to be dedicated to this program that we talked about tonight. So I thought that was, that was really good. We also heard from a couple of children, they're actually grownups now, that went through the foster care program and, and are doing very well. There's, there's successes there. Oftentimes, we highlight the negativity that happens in foster homes, and that's a real problem. But there's also successes. And we had a meeting with Lancaster AV Edge regarding upcoming projects. So it was a very busy month, Mayor.
That it was. That was a lot of reporting. We're only halfway down the dais.
Sorry about that.
Councilmember Olson, what do you got?
I'll keep mine short because it's really cold in here, isn't it?
It is a little.
Ay, my.
It's too cold, it's too hot.
So my report will be filed. I won't talk about anything that's already been talked about to save some time here. But we have had a lot of FaceTime with Karen Bass, the mayor of LA, recently. And I feel very confident and comfortable in the fact that I believe she understands our successes and our failures affect them. And their successes and their failures affect us. So we cannot do things independently. We need regional cooperation. And I really believe that she is a champion for that and that she cares about the surrounding areas in the county. And I look forward to continuing to build that relationship because we have a lot of challenges that we need their help with, and they've got a lot coming up that they probably need our help with. And this is, I think, the start of something great. So thank you, Mayor Bass, for your leadership and your concern about neighboring communities. I went to the Palmdale Sheriff's Station haunted house. Holy crap. You scared the snot out of some children. They came out of there crying. And maybe that's appropriate. Maybe they shouldn't have positive memories of visiting the jail. But you guys went above and beyond. That was really, really cool. And I'm not going to lie, I was scared a little The election's over. I don't want to say much about that, other than I'm just glad it's over. But it appears our colleagues are victorious in their elections. So congratulations to both of you. And I want to thank the voters for having faith and confidence into this body. With the passage of Measure PD, I think the voters said they trust us to be stewards of their dollars. So we will not let you down. We value your trust. We will make that decision, a good decision for you. Other than that, I'm excited about Veterans Day on Monday. Come out and get your PIN. We will be there, what time?
11:00.
11:00 on Monday. And, oh, yeah, the Coffee for Vets Ball was a great time. So congratulations to them. I don't know, I just like being around veterans. I get that, the tension released on other veterans. We have an understanding that we will make fun of each other, and boy, did we that night. It was fun. So congratulations to them. And I will shut up.
Okay.
I will indeed be brief. So we've all spoken ad nauseam about Together California, but there's not enough to be said. It was a wonderful event. Thank you to Karen Bass, Mayor Karen Bass, for opening up her home in order to allow us to close the gap, the funding gap. We were trying to, we've thus far raised $23.8 million for that project. There's a $4 million gap. As I understand it, that evening, we were able to raise an additional million. So that gap is getting smaller and smaller as we speak. So thank you to Mayor Bass. October was Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And so I do want to pay special recognition to the Three Heart Connection Thrivers Gala. Three Heart Connection is an organization that does a lot of education and outreach to all women, men who have experienced domestic violence. But they do a lot of workshops and, and training for healthy relationships and mental health components to the domestic violence and, and breaking the cycle of violence. So I just want to thank them for hosting us at their gala. And I think that's it. Thank you. Oh, one more thing. There were a lot of, there was a lot of mention of the, several Halloween events, trunk or treat. There was a variety of them. I did get a chance to go to the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce Dia de los Muertos event and was surprised to learn that in the past, I think it's six years, the City of Palmdale has not sponsored that event. I'm hoping that moving forward, we can. For those of you who aren't aware, Dia de los Muertos is not just a Halloween event for those of Latin descent. It really is a cultural and spiritual holiday. It is when we pay tribute to our ancestors and family members that, that we've lost and, and our spiritual connection with them. So just a suggestion, moving forward, I, I hope that we can support the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce in that event. Thanks.
All right. I actually did speak with them about that. And I thought we, we were, and they did clarify, we were, we give them space. We let them use office space. But there's always more. But we want to be good partners in the community. However, that was a lot of stuff. That was a really, really busy month. I've got two full pages, and there's still stuff. I forgot to add, a lot of the stuff, I was able to attend with my amazing colleagues here. And I think all together, we do a great job representing the community. We can't make everything, but we all kind of bridge the gap and we fill in. And sometimes we, we make all the events together, which is great. Couple of things that stood out that I was able to attend. New business came to town, Bob's Furniture, Bob's Discount Furniture. They took the old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. I didn't realize how popular they were until they told me their first couple of weeks of business. And I think it's great. That's, that's, that's amazing sales tax that's going to come into our community. And I know quite a few people already that have already went there and bought furniture.
Yeah, they already got me for $2,500.
So, yeah, it's, you know.
No, no.
It's nice to see some of those empty retail spaces getting filled up with businesses that can actually sell merchandise, produce jobs and tax revenue. And the culture of that company seems very positive. The employees there seem very happy and very well taken care of. I did an interview with KFI about Christopher Hubbard, the Pillowcase Rapist. Just being a good neighbor in the community for Juniper Hills and making sure that they know that we stand with them, that we don't want that, that man in that area. Quick update, the house has been, the house is not occupiable due to code violations. So, so in the meantime, he won't be moving in. That's the latest update. But I usually try and go to speak at their community meetings and get the update and follow that, just because it is a neighboring community of ours. And it's, it has become an issue of concern. Kaleidoscope Fall Festival gets better every single year. And kudos to the Parks Department for all the amazing events and throwing together those Dodger game watch parties.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm allowed to say Dodgers, but I'm going to say it anyway. But, yeah, they were able to put that together and let people watch the game with friends and family. And they were very well attended, as far as I was made aware. We were, we were out of town attending other events, but I would have loved to have been there. Here's one thing. Did anybody talk about the Yellen Park soccer field?
No.
Did we?
It's November.
Oh, okay.
It was November.
It was November? Okay. Is that why? All right. I guess we can talk about it next time. But if you saw Facebook, it was a great, it was a great evening, and it's, it's, it's a great accomplishment for Yellen Park. I attended the 14th Annual Ride End of Violence, a bunch of meetings. I'll end it on this, because a lot of the other stuff we attended. One of my favorite things that the city's done for almost 20 years is the Palmdale Partners Academy. We had the graduation ceremony. And it, Marcia's nodding.
First class.
Yep. And I love it because it opens the door to local government, and it shows people how, how we do what we do. Shows them the staffs, the different departments, and everything it takes to run a city of 350 people plus, a $500 million a year budget city. And it really does, it really, people do seem to appreciate it. And I hope it gets people more involved in local government, because that's something we desperately need more of. And I hope to see some of those participants and students come to work for the city someday. And I, I think, I, I think I met a few of them that were pretty excited about it. But a lot of events. October was a very busy month. And, and it was just, it was just, it was just great getting out in the community and doing all those events again. I don't remember a month that's been so busy.
Yeah.
All right. So that takes us to item number 10, non-agenda public comments. Madam Clerk? Madam Clerk?
We have Eugene Hernandez.
Hi Eugene.
Hi. Congratulations, Richard, on your election. Um, I frequent, frequently use the pub, uh, Palmdale Public Library. And each time I go there, there's no soap or towels in the men's bathroom. And it really irritates me because the, the, the users of the, of the library are these Mexicano kids and their parents and the homeless. So I've told the staff over and over again, why can't you just provide the sanitary equipment for, for the patrons of this library? And they still haven't done that. And in addition, there's a safe, it was a safety problem uh, where, where the security guard from the library is like, what, city clerk is here. And there was this homeless mentally ill man who was eating out of a can with the most gigantic knife I've seen. And, and, and they didn't even, they didn't even look up from their desk. I said, this homeless man can turn that knife and stab one of the kids who attend here. Who knows? But they should be on their job, right? And also, I would just like to mention that I like that uh, Mayor Bishop uh, supports the kids. But you don't support getting bus benches for the kids. I drive by Palmdale High School, there's still no bus benches, no bus shelter for the kids who are waiting for the bus. When are you gonna wake up, uh, Austin, when are you gonna wake up to ask AVTA to provide bus benches? That's just a basic necessity. Do you think you're above that? You think you could just give flowery language about the STEM program, but you can't watch the, the welfare of the kids? You know, you're a big hypocrite.
We have J and V Auto Care.
Bus benches in the works.
J and V Auto Care.
My name is Chris Medrano. Um, I work at J and J Auto Repair. Um, I'm the manager there, and I just wanted to raise a concern that I have in regards to code enforcement coming in and telling me how to run my business. Honestly, I feel like it's not fair the way they're telling me. They come in, they say I can't park my cars here. I can't park these clients' cars here. I want to provide, you know, auto care services to anyone who comes into the shop, but if I don't have enough space where I can park these cars, he's telling me I can't work here, that I'm not allowed to park cars here, you know? He came the first time, he raised a certain concern, which we did fix. He comes in the second time raising concerns he didn't raise the first time he came in. So I'm just wondering, why is code enforcement coming in and just trying to tell me how to run a business? You know what I mean? I wanna invite anybody in the council to come in and see how we work and where I, I have 17 cars at a time. And I get more every day, and not being able to use as, as much parking space as I can to provide these services to these people who need their vehicle to get to work. They, I have people who wanna come in same day, but I don't have space because I'm not allowed to park cars here and there. I just feel like I'm being treated unfairly. And I really would, I would really love anybody to come out and see how we're working, you know what I mean? What exactly, they're telling me where I can park, where I don't. We have a property out back which is accessible to any emergency vehicles that come in. You know, I, that we've already, you know, resolved that situation. I just want anybody to come in and see exactly, and I just wanna come to a solution. And I have to go further into legal, any legal actions against us, you know what I mean? I, you know, any citations. He even told me he can cite me for the parking, which I find is ridiculous. Um, so if I were to invite anybody here in the council to come in, city manager, whoever can, and just see how we work, you know what I mean?
We can't have a back and forth discussion, but I want you to go to the back, Mario. I wanna go speak to Mario real quick, and I'm a business owner too, that actually deals with vehicles and moving vehicles around, so I hear you. I understand. Talk to Mario and, and we'll be in touch.
So real quick, the mayor interrupted you like five seconds before your time was up, but if you could just, where are you located?
I'm on Rancho Vista, right before Sierra Highway.
Got it.
Um, the sign off front says J and J Auto Electric. I offer auto electric services and auto repair, so.
I know, I know exactly where you're at.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a busy spot. It's a good spot.
Yeah, like I said, I wanna provide for anybody in Palmdale, Lancaster, whoever comes in, even out of town. So, you know, I appreciate if anybody can come in.
Okay, yeah, just go talk to Mario. He's on the back right there.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor and council, one of the things, this is current uh, Civica, your, your code enforcement firm. This is a matter in litigation, so we don't wanna get too deep into it here. Certainly, they can talk, but this uh, there's a lot more to it than perhaps appears, so. Since it's in litigation, we kinda caution you not to dive in too deep.
Okay. All right, any comments or any other more?
Kim Nugent?
Good evening, oh, good evening, councilors. My name is Kim Wing from um, Antle Valley College and um, from Professor Don Pellego, Science 101. And I have a question regarding children um, development areas, where I find that um, I was wondering if there's any updates of like children's play area, such as like Mulligan has shut down. So I see that many schools aren't able to take children to local place because Palmdale City, you know, it was very nice to have um, Mulligans there and in school trip, field trip, which is very fun to have a local for students to enjoy certain events or as we wore for completing um, comp competitions. And I was just wondering, is there any update about that? Because um, like, for example, I saw a lot of um, children near um, Esperanza Elementary. They were very excited to see the, um, the playground. So it was very nice to see them be able to have fun there, and I was wondering, is there any similar development like that?
Okay. What, what can we say? I'm gonna defer.
Stay tuned.
Yeah, stay tuned. I hear you.
The moment we can say what we can say, we'll say it.
Yeah, it, I has, that's a, that's a top concern is that there's none, there's not enough stuff to do out here. I, I think we all miss the Mulligans. Anyone with kids misses the Mulligans. It was sad it went away during the pandemic. Um, but yeah, we, we all know everyone up here, everyone in the city knows.
Just keep coming to the council meetings and you'll be updated.
Yeah.
I guess the most appropriate thing to say is your economic development team is working diligently on exactly what you are talking about, and we hope to make an announcement here in the first part of next year.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
There are no more speaker cards, Mayor and Council?
Hello?
Good evening. I'd like to speak to the veterans and the friends and families that have veterans in there. I'm gonna tell you about a celebration known as Honor Flight. This is out of Kern County, based in um, Bakersfield. This is a three-day flight vacation, knowledgeable um, excursion for veterans to all the memorials for all the branches in our military. The recent flight, the 50th flight that just went, they also went to the Capitol and met some of their representatives. My flight, the 49th, in the spring, we went to the National Archives. And I must tell you, it seems I got to see the Constitution and the Bill of Rights, the handwritten every letter written by a human being, paper, I mean, it's, it's amazing. It's, I was in such awe, even still. An example of my flight, there were 99 veterans on my flight, two women, and there were 85 guardians. And what a guardian is, a guardian is assigned to every single veteran that goes. If you're a veteran that you're okay to walk around and, and do things on your own, you still have a guardian assigned to you to make sure you got your alarm set for the right time, get down and get breakfast and get on the right bus. But if you're a guardian that needs some kind of physical help, maybe you're in a wheelchair the whole trip, that guardian's with you all the time. So everyone has someone to look out for them. This costs absolutely nothing for a veteran, absolutely nothing. Plus, they give you three shirts, they give you a bag to pack stuff in, and they give you a jacket to wear. I found out recently that is not the case in other areas that do the Honor Flight. But in the Kern County, Bakersfield, they have fundraisers 24 hours a day, 365 days a year because it costs $1,200 to send a veteran on this trip. And every guardian that goes, they have to cough up that $1,200 themselves. Only the veterans go for free. So if you are a veteran of any branch, it doesn't matter if you were on a ship, shooting a gun, or if you were in the back doing the laundry for those guys. If you were a medic, like I was at Lackland Air Force Base, or you were a medic at the front line, makes absolutely no difference. You are entitled to have this honor. You go to Honor Flight Kern uh, on, on the internet, and you can get the application and everything. Highly, please, you, if you're a veteran, you're entitled, if you have one in your family, please tell them about this. It will be okay. They will be taken care of. They bring medics with them. They give medication if you need it. If you need help in any way, they are there for you. I could not believe how memorable it was, and boy, I gave them, I gave those guys hell. Thank you.
Can we put the link to that on our webpage under the Veteran Resources? Thank you.
All right, anybody else wishing to speak? Saying none?
Mayor, um, I'm not able to attend the veteran ceremonies on Monday because I'm going to be out of town.
Okay.
I am out of town too. I apologize. Marcia, I apologize up front for not being able to make the event on Monday. I know you're a veteran and I, I apologize.
Thank you, but I'm gonna be in Disneyland.
There you go. Okay. I have number 11, presentation by city attorney.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and public. We have two properly agendized closed session items, both dealing with litigation. Uh, so at your convenience, we can recess to closed session to discuss them.
All right, and we'll be back.
It's one, it's one's a button, isn't it?
Oh, he didn't? No anymore.
Like I said, you all be getting laid.
You should have seen it up here.
I have mail with your coat.
You'd have a vest on and stuff.
Yeah, I'm like the only one that's.
Oh, no, I'm good too. This is my temperature.
I have my own insulation.
I thought you would thrive well with fire.
I'm a Michigan boy, man. I grew up sub- zeros.
All right, Dan, we're back. Announcement by the City Attorney, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff that's hanging out. We discussed with the council, the two items, 11-1, 11-2. Council was updated, but no reportable actions occurred. Back to you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, City Attorney. So tonight, we will be adjourned in the meeting in memory of Lieutenant Commander Lindsey P. Evans. We're going to adjourn this meeting to November 20th, 2024, right here at 5 o'clock, Palmdale City Hall. Thank you all for coming.
Sorry, can I just mention that Lieutenant Evans was an Air Force Navy pilot, Navy pilot stationed in Webby. She grew up in Palmdale. She was from Palmdale. She made history two Super Bowls ago when the overflight was led by an all-female crew. Lieutenant Evans was a part of that crew, making Palmdale proud and tragically lost her life in the line of duty in the state of Washington. And just condolences to her family and thank you for everything you've done for the city of Palmdale.
That's unfortunate. Thank you, Eric, for bringing all that information so we know. All right, so our next meeting will be November 20th, right here at Palmdale City Hall. Get home safe and stay warm. This meeting is adjourned.